Hi, Kent. We met January 2nd, 2024, and the minutes of that meeting are included in your packet. Any changes, additions, or I would entertain a motion to approve?
I would like to move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor McKeel, for the motion, and Counselor Oberst for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. And we now have time set aside for public comments. And who else did we receive? Anybody who wanted to make a public comment this evening?
We did not. Mayor Coons.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to our work session item. And tonight is a follow-up. We do have Scott Danson from the Mid Willamette Valley Council government with us to talk about the results of input on our city manager recruitment profile. So Scott, be our very first guest.
Thank you. That's an editing copy so that you could write in between the lines and things like that. I gave you three pieces of information in your packet. Just want to make sure everybody got that. One was a draft of what the profile would look like, and that was my best attempt to try to summarize what everybody said. Lots of good comments from you folks. Secondly, I gave you a copy of what everybody said so that you had copies of what everybody... how people voted about things where they thought things were important and the different types of language that was used by folks. So I just want to make sure we shared that with each other to the extent that we could. Some things were a repeat, so, you know, I may have left a few things out. So that's how we do that. Now, the idea, again, behind this profile is you allow public comment when it's done, when you're satisfied with it. And then we put that into the ad and as part of the advertisement. And that gives, of course, according to legal counsel, make sure you get that I dotted and T crossed, but that gives you the most latitude in order to conduct your search. So whether you're in executive session, out of executive session, all the choices that you plan to make. So just a reminder of that. So what I have tonight is a draft. Now, one other piece of business I think would help me is I think it would be... if it would be okay with the council, I'd like to, after we're done this evening, we'll do editing. We're going to do grammar and all of those kinds of things as a follow-up. So it won't just be our set of collective eyes or mine by myself. So we'll actually have a third party kind of do those kinds of things for us. But if you could assign maybe one, Madam Mayor, if that would be okay? If you could do that, that I could then call afterwards and we can kind of work through any of the little things that are left over as a result of this evening. Does that sound okay to council? Okay, good. I think that'll move it along well for you. So again, we put these in order. I did not rank these in order. I think you all were fairly consistent. Education and experience were your two top areas that you wanted to make sure that you had some good definition with. But you all also use some languages, so I gave you some choices in some of the areas. You said it one way, but you could also say it another way in some of these other sections. So we're going to go through that. Does that sound good? Okay. In education, we have a minimum... and this is the way we say it. We say a minimum of a bachelor's prefer an advanced degree in one of these areas strongly preferred. That lets you have a baseline. If you want your baseline to be a master's, though, you need to say that. Okay? And then the last piece of that is a statement I heard said several times, and it was in your previous advertisement as well, and that is this balance of experience and education was something that you want the ability to consider that. So those are the three main parts in there. What kind of feedback do you want to give me on that? Is that fairly consistent? Yes, sir.
It's... you list several academic majors there or closely related field. How closely? Well, and the reason I ask that...
Yeah.
If you're an undergraduate biology major, you go on and become the mayor of a town and decide you're interested in public administration, and you go back and get a, you know, a degree in, you know, in public... you don't have the first one.
No, you don't. You're right.
And that's not closely related, but it's related. I mean, if you put the whole thing, maybe it works, you know, the balance of education and experience? I don't know.
You could say, to follow your lead on that statement, you could say that candidates need to have a match... a minimum of a bachelor's degree. Stop. Strongly prefer a master's in public administration, business administration, planning, urban policy, you know, those kinds of things. You could do it that way, too. That would allow what you just said. I would say, though, that really what we're looking for, and most people who are applying go, oh, okay, I've got my bachelor's degree. And you're right, I've been in the business now, and I went on and got a master's degree because I really liked planning. I really enjoyed public administration. I enjoyed business administration. And that's one of the degrees I got. You could do it like that. I think most people are going to say, okay, I got a degree in mathematics, and I went on and got an MBA. I would consider that... you've met the criteria at that point. Now it's a question of how much experience do you have in public administration? These are buzzwords, you know, to a great degree in our business, in public administration. These terms, urban public administration, urban planning, public finance, business administration, public administration. I agree with you. You know, people get an undergraduate degree, and then they decide to specialize later.
So do people... Do folks have a preference, then, about specifying the bachelor's degree in one of these fields or comfortable with a bachelor's degree being a minimum? Counselor McKeel and Counselor Oberst?
Excuse me. I actually like that the majors are listed and because it is important that these are the programs of the field, and there is a great deal of information that are learned in those programs. But I think the second sentence, "an advanced degree in one of these areas is strongly preferred", if you have a bachelor's degree in biology and you go back and get your master's and MBA, you have the second one strongly preferred.
Yep.
So it does list that, go back to that list of majors. So I really think we shouldn't be leaving those majors in there.
Okay.
I think this is a long shot, but that guy who got the biology degree that graduated and went to work for a city working for the public works department installing water meter and works his way up through, or her way up through the 30 years at that city and other cities has become an assistant without any advanced degree in any area and is now becoming our manager. 30 years, anyway.
The last sentence that captures, I think, what you just said, and that is a balance of management experience and education portfolio will be considered together in the selection process. I really think that captures that.
Yeah, doesn't require the advanced degree. That's a preference, but the experience.
If you got a degree in biology and became the wastewater treatment plant operator, you have closely related field pretty quickly, you know? Construction management or, you know, something that's not on the list. But I think you've given this last sentence is that balance of education and experience. Get bachelor's degree in mathematics and then go into the military. And trust me, I've got 20 years of great experience, management, you know, all the things I need. So, and I've been a public administrator in...
Counselor Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking at this, I do recognize that there are individuals in the world today that do have, you know, their MBA, MPA, that perhaps never finished a formal bachelor's. If they have an advanced degree, and I know this is a very small sliver, but if we're using that bachelor's as a stated minimum, they have that advanced degree but not a bachelor's, are they precluded from this?
I've never heard of the ability to get a master's without an undergraduate. I'm sure you've just said it. I guess that exists, but I would leave it to the fact that they have the advanced degree.
Thank you. I'm comfortable with that.
As being a minimum at that point in time. So I guess there are different ways that things are handled that way, but I would say that if they have the master's, then they're fine.
Okay. I'm hearing they must have a minimum of a bachelor's degree. And then we... I don't hear us saying that we need the bachelor's degree to be in one of those areas. But then a bachelor's degree or advanced degree in one of these areas is strongly preferred? Is that what we want to say? And then about...
A bachelor's degree...
Do we want to say a bachelor's, a minimum of a bachelor's degree in the areas?
I think so.
Counselor Selena Soliveros?
I think I would be fine with a bachelor's degree and then having a master's in these closely related areas just because I think it will open a larger pool. If, I mean, they're going to have to go through a pretty stringent process anyway, and we'll have that opportunity to decide whether they qualify or not qualify. But I think if we are too stringent, we risk that the opportunity of maybe missing out on somebody who maybe didn't feel that they qualified. So I think a bachelor's degree minimum and then a preferred master's degree in these areas are closely related and to keep the balance of management experience and education because we do want that balance.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes, I agree with Counselor Selena Soliveros's assessment. I also feel that, worded that way, it more closely aligns with what our actual goal is. Right? We're setting some minimums which help us to remain compliant with labor and hiring practices, but then we're refining that and providing clarity to applicants.
Counselor Belts, if you can hear us, did you have anything, any thoughts on this?
Hold on one moment. Alexa, sorry, my Alexa was talking to me. And I'm sorry I'm not there. You can tell why because I don't want everybody else to get... No, I always have concerns when we set minimums, just as Counselor Selena Soliveros said, that we're going to be discouraging some people because being one that took 32 years to finish college, yet I worked at a major university and I had advanced experience. And so I'm just a little concerned about being too stringent. And we're also hanging a lot on our first question. So just a little concerned about that.
Thank you for your background, too, Counselor Belts. So we feel like you're part of us here with the lovely wood behind us. I'm kind of hearing a consensus to move forward with just the minimum bachelor's degree but not the areas. Counselor Carey?
Sorry. Oh, it's new protocol. Okay, I'll restate that. It may be that we could, because I am concerned, and I think that there are some undergraduate training that's pretty important in those majors. But if we could say that a minimum of a bachelor's degree preferably in public administration, business administration, and so forth. So that gives the indication that we're interested in that, and there are some things that we value, but it wouldn't be a binary choice. That would be a compromise suggestion.
Heartburn on that? Did you get that, Scott? Okay.
That's right. I'm sorry. Apologize. New technology. I'm getting there. But anyways, I do think that you should be able to be covered. We're going to try to look at both sides. So when we're screening, we're going to try to look at their experience and that as a minimum and then work that from there.
And I think hearing the discussion is more important for our screener...
Yes.
than really what it says on paper. That he understands our intent now, and if there is this amazing candidate that's kind of gray area, I think Scott will know whether or not to at least bring that to us to say, what do you think?
Absolutely.
All right. Can we move on then to experience? And hopefully not take quite as long with every section or else we may have to just defer this to another opportunity for a couple of us to read and wordsmiths. So, or for you to provide direct input to Scott individually and make him compile again.
Very good. Next one is simply here, your minimums are that they should have at least 10 years' experience as a baseline, including in that 10 years, a minimum of five years of progressive management, progressive management experience. What that means is that they've come in and they've moved up the chain. They've been given more responsibility over time. So if you're a candidate and you see that, that's what that's saying to you. And then we tried to get pretty specific. Now, there was a comment about a department... what if it's a department head from a really large jurisdiction? What I would say to that, and I think it's a fair statement, is that if you've become a department head, you've either done it because you've worked your way up progressively to that position within a single organization or you've come in with these and they've put you into that area, and that's been an area that you've done. So what we're looking for is what else have you done? So if they have jumped around from a couple different organizations, I'm going to see, oh, they were a finance director in one, but in the next one, they became a human resources director. You see what I'm saying? So you're stacking those. So I think you're okay. And so what makes it really important is that attractive candidates will have a strong background in financial management, capital budgeting. That's the term we use instead of public works financing. So capital budgeting and financing, how do you finance projects? Administrative and human resource management, budgeting utilities to include electric, water, sewer, and stormwater. Does that cover all your utilities? That the manager will have some experience? They don't have to know everything. They just have to know how they work and work together. Does that make sense? Okay. And then we caveat it with Oregon land use and budget law. Again, you guys have a unique set in both of those areas, even though you might have people who do those things, understanding why you're in the middle of something that's pretty important. Yeah.
Comments on this section? Counselor Carey?
One of the things that I found throughout here is there wasn't a lot of Monmouth reference and not specific to this particular one, but we don't reference. And this could be applied in a lot of places. One of the things that I wonder if we could include in the experience, Oregon land use for sure, Oregon budget law, you bet. We've got a, right in the middle of a pretty aggressive urban renewal agency. And I'm wondering if we'd like to have that as a strongly preferred. Not a requirement necessarily, but as a strongly preferred right there with the rest of that?
I would actually put that back up there. So like financial management, capital budgeting, finance, urban renewal, urban renewal work.
Yeah.
If that's a focus for y'all, I'd put it in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do folks feel about the specifics? And the comment, John, about Monmouth's specific? I think we have a version of this that is flowery, that really talks about us and why us and the assets of coming here. That is not at all part of this necessarily, I think. I think the really part about making it an attractive announcement is not part of this.
Sure, there's a recruiting element of this.
Right.
But if we'd like to evaluate candidates based on the things that we need here...
Yeah.
Urban renewal is one of those, for example. You know, our public power, you know, is one of those. Our organization with MINAT is one of those that makes it unique. And it's not so much a recruiter, and I agree, cities, but it's the things that the Monmouth City Manager is going to need to do.
Yeah. And like, MINAT comes up later, so there's...
Yeah.
I'm just curious on this section about what if it's somebody who is coming from a county, not a city? Or from another public entity, not a city? How do we want to say? City manager, assistant city manager, right? That's another option to consider. Counselor Lopez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I have two comments. First, I would like to note that there is a lot of Monmouth-specific considerations in the, oh, it's item 10, other important skills and experience. That's where much of that lives. So I am comfortable with that there. Regarding the question at hand, city manager, assistant city manager, et cetera, I would change just either, the word either-as, a city manager, assistant city manager, et cetera, to such-as, a city manager, assistant city manager, et cetera. That makes our intent clear. However, it does give us the latitude to be able to make those considerations if someone is coming from a county or from metro or who knows?
Two points I do want to be clear about. The more descriptive part about Monmouth is in another part of the recruitment flyer. You actually edited quite extensively, Mr. Carey, in the initial stuff that we gave out. Once this is done, this is about the person, that other part will be more very Monmouth-specific. So when this is placed in, I think you'll feel like it's comfortable, and it will be comfortably placed. Secondly, what you really want to know is that someone can manage a complex organization. And cities are because they have very unique skill sets in each of the divisions. Fire is very different than public works. It's very different than human resources. It's different than electric. You know, there are just differences in these things. So managing a complex organization is what you're looking for. So that's part of the evaluation process. But very good point, and I think such-as would work.
Okay, not seeing any difficulty with that. So that looks good. Counselor Belts nodding, moving on.
Okay. The next section is administrative and management. This is, again, one of those that you folks had lots of varying things, but yet very consistent. So I tried to weave your comments into that. Tried to, let's see. The principles, policies, and procedures of municipal government. You're asking someone, we want you to be city-oriented. In other words, know how this kind of an organization works, including and specifically the council manager form, which is unique. So you want to make sure you... that's why I said that there. You also want them to be able to do tactics and strategy. See, because you're going to do them four or five times in a day. You're going to go from strategy to tactics, tactics back to strategy in a day. Again, the term progressive management is, again, progressing through that. And then we've tried to concentrate on team of, building and maintaining a team of public servants. We've defined who they are. They're people who value accountability and engagement as well as promote a common vision with stakeholders. So we've tried to say these things in a way that somebody who reads this says, oh, okay, it's a team approach to management. Because one of the questions you'll ask is, you really ever manage a team? And they say, no, never done that. Yeah, you know what I'm saying? So it'll give you fodder for the interview process. The ability of, these are all management. Clear expectations, providing productive feedback, fostering an atmosphere of teamwork. Do these things meet your value sets? I think is the big question. I heard that consistently in your writing.
Counselor Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that this does meet our value set. And reading this in particular, I don't remember what I specifically wrote, but I feel like many of us likely feel like each of us could have wrote this. I feel very good about this segment. Looking at the note about the city manager model makes me think of Oregon's nature as a home rule state and whether or not, knowing that we may attract some national candidates, whether or not it's worthwhile just calling out that we're looking for someone that's at least familiar with that concept that sets the boundaries of, you know, what falls under the state's purview versus the city's purview.
I don't know. I will say this for legal counsel's ears because I think you'll like to hear it. I'm not really sure how much of a home rule state you really are some days with this much preemptive authority that comes down from a series of the agencies. I mean, that's an honest manager's assessment because I was in a home rule state in South Carolina, and the state didn't show up in our jurisdictions. Here, the state preempts a lot.
Point taken.
Well, point taken. The council manager form of government is, in our profession, known. And that means that you're saying to the candidate, we expect you to be the chief executive officer, not the chief administrative officer, the chief executive officer. Hire, fire, sign contracts, okay? Run the day-to-day. The council's the policy board. That's what you're saying when you say council manager. Now, it's gray. It's a gray world politically, and we understand that. But what you're saying is that's the form of government you've chosen. The power, correct me if I'm wrong, in a council manager form of government, you said by law in your charter that that person holds those powers, not that the council will give those powers to you when you want it or when they decide to give it to you. So I think when people see this, they'll understand what that means. If you were not, I would not put that in there. Then someone would say, are you the chief administrative officer? I'd say yes because I'd include a copy in the charter.
Yeah, and I'm very familiar with that model and the differences between those two different organizational standpoints. I was just suggesting that not adding the home rule concept as something opposed to that, just to build on some of the considerations that detail the complex nature in which we exist with the states and city government.
Think you set yourself up for some good questions during an interview, Tom.
Lane?
Yeah, if I could just... Home rule issues are not likely to come up on a day-to-day basis in the city manager's administration of the city. They're going to come up in a legal context usually. Yeah, I mean, so I wouldn't really depend on the city manager having a strong sense of home rule. of, of home rule. I think you're right. You ask a question, you know, is this subject to home rule? And, you know, a lawyer is going to, the city attorney is going to spend a day and a half researching that. I don't expect the city manager to know that. I wouldn't know it in most cases off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Great.
I don't think that's as important right now.
Anything else for this section? We'll move on to how we describe budget and finance.
All right, I know this is your favorite area, isn't it? I know it. Again, you have a finance officer in the city. So what you want them to understand is, A, how to manage that, and then B, enough financial acumen that you, that they understand the difference between budget, accounting for things, what the audit process is, the larger needs for capital financing, in other words, planning, planning your, 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 your resources. Where do your revenues come from? What's the life expectancy of those revenues? What's the growth value in those revenues? Those are the financial questions that management is asking and then debating with council, working with council on. You want to build a city hall. You don't have enough funds, you don't bring in enough funds, a bond referendum is recommended, or a borrowing. Well, how do we get it at the lowest price? A bond referendum. That's always your lowest-priced option. So that's the kind of thing you want from, from financial management, from the manager's perspective. You don't expect them to run the trial balance or the, and do journal entries, but you under, you need them to understand what the importance of a good managerial system is in finance. So that's what I've tried to say here. Madam Mayor, did I do okay with this?
I have one add, but I'll hear Counselor Oberst first.
So going back to a previous comment, is this a place to stick in experience with urban renewal district or increment financing or something like that? Taxi increment financing to make sure that somebody coming in understands how that works? Because I've run into a lot of people who don't get it.
Well, and I, again, I think this is overseeing the finance director, which is very important. So I, I, I'm not sure we need very specific on that. That could be a plus, obviously. We've said earlier, somebody with experience in urban renewal districts. But I'm not sure we need to list it in each of the different areas.
Do you folks have any TIFs? Do you do TIFs? Tax incremental financing? No. Okay. Uh, you do urban renewal, which is a form of a, yeah, it's, it's a form of a TIF. Some places, it's really intense. South Carolina had one TIF with 27 layers, 27 different TIFs over time on, layered on something. That's when it gets complicated. I didn't do it. The attorney did it with a finance person. You know, I mean, you get to that point. So what we did try to say in here to answer your question, though, I'm going to be specific, and that is, preferred candidate will have experience with capital project financing and management. In other words, understands that when it comes to that kind of an approach, you need to understand capital budget planning, capital financing structures, and what the options are.
Okay, and my only add was the, the part about budget management and engagement with department heads, but I'd like to add citizen budget committee. Again, not sure if that is unique to Oregon, but it's certainly an important part of Oregon budget. And having this, and knowing that although the finance director hopefully will get a lot of the questions, it's the city manager that gets a lot of the feedback from the citizen.
I've added that. I think that's a, that is a uniqueness here, so.
Counselor McHale?
So if that is unique to Oregon, do we need to have that in the preferred candidate if we're doing a national search? Because we're putting it, the successful candidate must demonstrate a strong acumen, citizen budget committee. And if that's not common across the country. I, I agree, I think we should have it in there, but I wonder if we didn't want it as preferred.
Okay, put it there.
We can do that.
I think as long as you say it, that's what's important, that bottom line.
And just also reemphasizing our values throughout, that citizen engagement, community engagement is a huge part of the expectation of this job in a lot of ways, so. All right. Nothing else there? Labor relations personnel?
We, I, I've tried to be more generalized here. Simply, it, human resources is a strength you have to come in with in management in Oregon. You just have to, not every place has a human resource officer. Even so, they're probably tasked, I bet, with five or six different things, you know? So that ability to know how to pick up a phone and call, how to, you know, look at your employee manual, how to, how to check with CIS, you know, if, if you're a customer of theirs, you know, those kinds of, how to talk to your attorney about that kind of thing. And then here, you have the labor relations issue built in. So I tried to build in all of that here. But the other things I wanted to make sure we emphasized is that, uh, uh, team building and team leading. So, um, good effective communications with staff, as well as city groups and their council, managing a diverse group of employees. So I want to make sure I got that in there. And then that experience with labor relations and the collective bargaining process. If you're in collective bargaining, does the manager, is that the chief negotiator? Or is it generally a, a labor attorney or the city attorney?
Uh, we used a labor attorney.
That's what I thought, yeah. So you're answering management questions at that point, Tom, in negotiations?
Yeah.
Well, that, that said, though, i- i- it's important that they're conversant in that. Because to your point, they're going to be asked a lot of the questions.
Yep.
You know, and, and that's where they need to be able to use the right language.
That's right.
The only change I would suggest here is taking out the communications to city groups and our council, because that is not a labor relations and personnel experience skill that comes down here below.
Good catch, very good catch. Okay, out.
Okay, moving on to something we all might have more thoughts on.
Uh, community relations experience, I gave you two, three versions, actually. Gave you, gave you three, because y'all said kind of the same thing, but in different ways. So I think this is more of a preference on y'all's part here, about how you want this portion said. Version A, the city manager expected to be involved. I won't bore you with reading that. The second one is direct experience in promoting and developing community relations. And the third, you, you added some interesting sentences here, such as, uh, the ability to demonstrate a strong commitment to providing excellent customer service. That's a really good point. Do you want that there? Ability to work with people tactfully, diplomatically, and politely, and treating individuals with fair and consistent. It's a lovely sentence. I, I just, I could have put it in both versions. And the last one is a standalone one, and the ability to effectively diffuse potential conflict. If I was a candidate, I'd be like, okay, you want to talk to me a little bit about what I'm diffusing? Is there a lot of history of diffusing? Yeah. Yeah, that, so, so I, I separated that one out as well. So the two choices, um, and it's, it's really which I, I think it can be either one or it could be a combination of the two, so.
Counselor Oberst, and then Counselor Lopez?
So I know we're not supposed to word smith, but first sentence in the first one is fabulous in that it calls upon this person to recognize building community, building a sense of community. All of the second one works for me. So if you put, paste the first sentence in the first one onto all of version B. And then I do like some of the things that are said in version C as well.
Those, those last.
As you point out, that last sentence is potentially off-putting to.
Maybe there's another way to say it.
And, and I think, but at the same time, it also goes with the job.
But it does.
You know, and I, I don't think that there would be an expectation that somebody could be a city manager without having to occasionally effectively diffuse a potential conflict. You know, I mean, I, I'm just thinking back to when we accidentally shut off power in a house and the refrigerator was ruined by the stuff inside, and Manager McClure had to figure out how to diffuse that situation. That's not one that you're going to be able to write up and put into a job description.
But it happens.
Right?
Okay.
And, uh, so.
Counsel, Counselor Lopez, that?
Uh, yes, I, I believe that both versions, A and B, you know, work well. The, I believe it's the last sentence in version A directly references the council's value of diversity, equity, inclusion, while dealing with community, as well as demonstrating fair treatment for all with tactful and respectful interactions. I like that it specifically calls out that that is one of council's values, and that that is one of our expectations for the individual that's leading this organization. The rest of either version A or B, I'm, I'm quite happy with. But that, that particular sentence, or at least calling out that value of diversity, equity, inclusion, is, is quite important to me. Looking at some of the considerations in version C, I feel that the last sentence of that regarding diffusing potential conflict, I don't believe that that has any, any significant place in, in this document. I mean, people will know that that's part of the job. It's part of any managerial space, whether it's a, whether it's a city or, you know, whether it's a, a small business. And I think that that sentence sheds a little bit of a negative light on, on our city.
Counselor McHale?
Um, yeah, I actually, I, I taught the, um, the council's value of diversity, equi- equity, and inclusion. I, I just, if we do go with that one, I think we should change the word dealing. And I'm not, I'm not going to word smith on anything else, but I think dealing is, is a bit off-putting, so interacting is, yeah. And so, but I, I really like version B in that it, it cuts to the, more to the core of what we're trying to accomplish with our council, um, our council values, in that we, it talks about the points of view and respect of multicultural environments and experience working with diverse and marginalized populations. I think it's more exacting of what the goal is, uh, the values are. It, I mean, we could say the values, colon, and then add, you know, but just include them into part B. I actually, I, I think I'm always going to be the counter voice tonight, but in part C, I actually saw the need for the candidate must have experienced diffusing potential conflict. I, I don't know, I've had several managers in my life who were not very good at that and didn't believe that was their job. And I think in today's world, with city government, that we're, I think we're very lucky here in Monmouth, but there, there is difficulty, and there is conflict that comes up. So I'm, I'm okay not having that sentence, but I, I think it is a good sentence to have.
Okay, there might be a way to work in, right? That something, some reference to conflict resolution.
Yeah, I like that better.
That might be a good way to do it.
Yeah.
Have, have experience with conflict resolution. And that's then not as stark as diffusing potential conflict, right?
Yeah, I, I agree. I like the conflict resolution piece. I perf-, I like version B, and I, and maybe put some, you know, kind of getting creative with that last sentence in A. Most of C, I'm not that crazy about, but that last, you know, I think the conflict resolution should be in there.
Okay, I think we can kind of work with this a little bit and massage it for the future version. Okay. Counselor Beltz, anything on this one?
I would, I would agree, there are elements of A, B, and I, I don't know about the, yeah, rewording of conflict, sorry, the ability to diffuse conflict, that can be reworded. That's, I'm good, thank you.
Counselor Carey?
Can't hear him.
Last, whether we work the last sentence on A, um, now, the second one, yeah, which one am I at here? I, I, I think we ought to reference our, our values. I think that's, that's an important piece that would suggest that they, they do that. So, so whether that can be woven in is, I think, as Counselor Salinas Oliveras mentioned, possibly on, on B, how, oh, there we go, wrong page. On B, however, I, I, I would, i- if we do go with B, I would like us to modify the final sentence, and that is that the candidate must have experience working effectively with diverse and marginalized populations. That's a binary, yes or no. And it, while I think we would love to have that, there may be, that their circumstances may not have put them in a situation where they've done that. So if we, if that could move to preferred, that, that would open it to perhaps more people and, and not eliminate an otherwise good candidate by circumstance. I think we're all after that, but just what it does to the pool.
I, I think there's a way to emphasize that as part of all of this diversity, that we can certainly, again, some of this would be a little repetitive if we just used each of these sentences, so, yep, I think there's a good way to.
Yeah.
I have some ideas about how to put this all together. Okay. Mike?
Yeah. Sorry. Learning your ways here. That last sentence in A, and how it works in more effectively into B, and make these more effective statements of, of desire and preference and ability to work with, yeah. I, that makes sense. Okay?
All right, council relations experience?
Again, you folks kind of came at it same, opposite sides of the same thing in, in A and B. One just sounded much more like you'd never had that versus.
We're used to it.
Gosh, we're, or you're used to it. So that's why I put both of them down here. And I, you know, I think the idea here is that you're trying to say a couple of things out loud. You want good, open, honest communication between manager and, 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 and the council. You want competent and good and clear and transparent information so that you can make good decisions. And you, you want, one, one other thing I heard you folks say is that you, you want someone who is conducting that flow of information. You have talented staff, so you want to be able to make sure that you understand what's going on, and, and that that manager respects and understands that, and that there's a respect and, and, uh, built between the manager and staff, that people don't step out of line in either way, either coming down from council or coming up. Because the one thing you don't want to do in a council manager is direct from there, except to the manager. But you also don't, uh, you want to have enough trust that the information that's put in front is sound, that's the kind that you folks need to debate coming from staff.
Yeah, I think maybe the opposite of that, Scott, is we want to actually be able to hear directly from department heads, though, too.
So that's a trust issue with management.
Right, that not having this, a city manager who micromanages that, that allows that directly. So that's why we want to make sure that that is open and, um, but I'm not sure we have to say things like, you have to schedule meetings with us. That will be the expectation we set.
It's interesting, I saw a candidate profile this weekend, as a side note, that actually said that. It, it, yeah, i- i- it's, it's getting, uh, I've been doing this for too long. It's getting interesting out there. I mean, when you have to say that in a profile note, that's when you know something is, I mean, the first thing that occurred to me as I read it, I try to read these things to try to get ideas and sentences. try to get ideas and sentences, uh, you know, when we do these things. But when I read that statement, I said, what the heck's going on there? Yeah, I mean, you know, honestly, you, you just start to scratch your head and go, oh my goodness, you know? And so, um, I think the way you say it's important. So have in either A or B, we said what you folks believe you intend about council relations. That's the question in front of you.
Councillor Oberst.
Um, going back to the question, uh, or the point about our talented staff, um, I can imagine a situation where staff is aware that council's interested in a certain direction on something and council, the staff is ready to tell us, well, we can do that, except the city manager steps in and says, you're not going to tell them that. And that's the thing I would really like to avoid, that, you know, manager overruling communication from staff and department heads to council. Um, unless it's a situation where, you know, it would be a really bad idea to do what is proposed. I could see that being a necessity occasionally, but I really want to see that free flow of information. And I think you can word that in a way that doesn't come across as, you know, sit down and shut up, right? Just a gentle, a gentle way of saying, let staff communicate, let's, let department heads communicate with council. And I, I don't know, I don't have the wording, uh, I just think it's an important principle if there's any way to work that in without it becoming frightening.
Councillor McKeel.
I, I, um, I was a little concerned with impromptu meetings. Is that something we want in?
Yeah, I think that whole sentence can come out.
Which sentence is that? Is that in B?
It's in A.
A.
I think, I, I like it better the way it, I feel it's worded in B, which is, um, working effectively with the entire council as well as individual members. That indicates you will have meetings with individual members, you will have some kind of relationship with individual members, so I like that better than anything about scheduling meetings, as Scott said. I don't want anyone to read this and go, why, the last person didn't meet with them and they're insistent that you have to have meetings. I, I don't feel like that.
Yeah.
Or we have council members that expect that I can stand outside your door and you're going to, you know, see me.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, we, I don't think we need to be that specific.
Gee, I, I, I didn't know it wasn't that way. Sorry, kids, I've got a councillor on the phone.
It's, it's, it's only with me, I, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm giving you our time. I think one of the things I do want to say is one of the, I hear B as a better version. Um, that's number one, but secondly, um, an atmosphere of trust. Um, so I think that's a better way to, to say it than micromanage, but you want a, if you have a talented team and you have a talented council, that manager becomes a trust age, a trusted, it has to be a trusted agent, there has to be trust in the organization and in the management style. Now, some of that comes with experience and time in the seat, but, um, and then the experience together, right, you know? Um, because there is a time and a place, just make sure I'm clear on this, there is a time and a place when a manager says, that's not the appropriate time to bring that up. We're pushing over here because we're in a situation where we've got to do something over here. I know you really want this, but that's a trust issue, that's a conversation that managers have. Um, but, uh, let me work in an element of trust word, uh, statement in here, and you like B. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Councillor Lopez.
May I interject?
What's up?
Can I interject?
Please.
So I have our charter up, section six point oh three, except for inquiries relating to city services made as a private citizen, elected officials shall deal with employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager, and shall not make inquiries to or investigations of or give orders to any such employees, neither publicly nor privately. So that's in our charter.
Yeah, thanks, Phyllis, and what I'm hearing us say is not necessarily that we want the right to be able to go directly to department heads, but we want to hear from them if there are issues about their departments, um, that we, it's, it's what we do now. They give us reports on their own issues rather than everything being a city manager report. So that's good to keep that in mind, I don't think we want to say anything like that in here.
I would agree.
One, one final note, um, the more I read through, um, version B, it just strikes me that the very first sentence, um, while we pack a lot in there, is maybe a little bit of an incomplete sentence. Um, I'm not going to try to wordsmith it, but I trust you to, uh, to, to clean that one up.
Yeah, not great. A little sexy.
Okay. Okay. Got it? And I think, uh, Phyllis does bring up a good point. Um, one thing you do not want to be as an employee of the city is getting it from six different directions. You want it to be clean and clear, you know, that's what helps you do your job on a daily basis. Um, so it's, it's hard to work for more than one person.
Yeah, we don't want to be those people.
But the manager does work for a body, and you'll hear that reference a lot of times between the manager and the council, they'll say, you know, I, I've always referred to the mayor as a first among equals, that's the body politic that's directing, and so what that generally means is I'll probably talk to the mayor every day as a manager, but that when the council is directing, I want the consensus or vote of the council to direct. So, um, if, if you understand what I'm saying with that.
And I agree wholeheartedly with that. Um, I just want to see that ability to have a free flow of information through, through the manager to staff and from staff through the manager, without the manager erecting roadblocks to information to, you know, keeping the council from being fully informed.
Yep.
You know, that, that's my point.
Yep.
We'll see if Christie has thoughts on that, she's looking at me. Um, I'm going to move on to partner, I took intergovernmental relations, which I just renamed partner and intergovernmental relations.
Okay.
Thoughts about that, other than my editorialization?
Um, you know, the, so I think, I'm not going to repeat all that, but, uh, I think this is an opportunity to, because this is something we can use to evaluate a candidate, you know, have you dealt with these kinds of things and what have you done? So that would be, you know, I'm not going to, you know, tell you how to, how to put that in there, but I, but that concept, I, I think we ought to consider.
It is not uncommon for, in this section, to use the term town and gown, that is a, uh, particular relationship and some, it, it's a, it's like saying that you manage a resort town or you manage a mill city. So you manage places that have a specific institutional or cultural background to them, and so being familiar with that is important. I think town and gown is certainly important here, and so is intergovernmental agreements with, with, with your neighbor independence. Plus, you, if I'm not mistaken, you have a fire district, so then having that relationship with a fire district, so you have other districts here, you have the school district as well, so, um, I, I think it's probably worth mentioning WU, independents, fire districts and others. Um, and I like the way you said partners and, uh, intergovernmental relations, partnerships, and, you know, so there's lots of different players in your life here.
Councillor Oberst.
Uh, the note I just made to myself, I've always said Monmouth has four governments that rely us and the state, the county, the school districts and the fire district. And so you've identified those. And then we have these partners, western and independents, that are sitting right on top of us, that we have to work closely with. And I think it's important to acknowledge those six relationships, if there's any way we can. There are others we have to work with as well, but those are the biggest, those six.
L- Lane?
Yeah, not, not to insert myself in, in your discussions, except to note that section ten, again, does actually address western and independents and Polk County, uh, so I don't know that you necessarily want to address them in both places.
Well, and it only does it talking about my net, which is weird, so we'll probably change that. But they, my net offers services to all those people, except, I mean, that's what's kind of weird, so, yeah.
Sorry, I have to turn that back on.
Okay, we're, what is number D here?
D is number nine, I'm sorry, um, you know, I, you'd think after all these years of using Word, oh, wait a second, it's only been half of the career, it was Wordstar before that, and D base, Cobalt and Portran, but anyways, those are old terms, aren't they? Yeah, typewriter. Uh, so innovations and major achievements, this is, again, we're getting a little bit more specific to Monmouth here. Um, but what we were trying to say is projecting forward. So, um, will help council staff residents to envision work towards ways delivering essential services, uh, to a diverse population in a cost-effective manner, identifying unique natures of Monmouth and challenges that face the city. You know, you got to be able to do those things, the ability to demonstrate innovative and creative thinking, you know, how have you thought out of the box before, or how did you go through that process? Um, who were, who was included in that thinking process? How did you engage, right? That's another thing that we're looking for. That's what I picked up on what you, um, but I, then I get very specific. Um, the, the sentence successful can provide visions for ways to effectively, but that's a repeat sentence. So, so, um, that's an either or, a sentence, I think, um, it could be rooted either deep here or we can, we can cross one of them out. Um, and then we go straight to affordable housing. And so I, and again, I'm just, I, I was pulling in bits and pieces of what people had to say. Um, should we take affordable housing out unless we're going to list specific innovations and achievements?
Maybe there's a way to address current priorities or, there, there might be something about that, uh, you know, ish, issues facing the city currently may include or something, because every city's dealing with homeless housing and houselessness issues, um, we've got, you know, we obviously, uh, we, we may list that, then potentially, I think, in our old one, I think we had a, a section called challenges, um, or, what was it called? Opportunities and challenges.
And that was actually distributed in the first cut around, where, that's where we talk about the opportunities and those things. So if you don't want to say it here, but what you really want to engage in here is, how have you addressed innovation achievements, how have you gotten there, candidate? We want you to help us get there. How have you done this before? So you could take that sentence out and then, uh, you go to the next one that says, must be able to demonstrate how to be open and effectively prioritize ideas and suggestions, you know, show us how you would do that, uh, constructive criticisms, and, um, and, uh, then you go on, you also went on to say that you support cultural events and things like this, so there's an expectation that you have to do those, but that's like housing too. You know, in other words, it's a very specific thing that you're saying in here, so.
And, and maybe a lot of that is opportunities and challenges, right? Things that we want them to build on, I, I'm not sure if it fits here, which is skills oriented. Councillor Carey, then Councillor Mc?
The, the, the innovation and major achievements may not be connected. Um, that said, I, I, I think we could work out a way, if you've got a major achievement, which was quite innovative, we'd love to hear about it. Um, you know, I think this is an opportunity to factor in some, um, uh, some local stuff, uh, you know, i- i- innovations, um, challenges that we're facing, such as, um, trolley funding, such as, uh, uh, searching for a solution for affordable housing, what innovative ideas you have in that area, and there's more, you know, other goals that we might have. So I think we can get to that, I, I, it, as it sits right now, the affordable housing sentence is just sort of there, it doesn't really relate, but it ought to be, and, and you're right, uh, Madam Mayor, that, that there, everybody's dealing with this kind of thing, but they need to know we are too, and, and if they've got a good idea, we'd love to hear it.
So I, I think that will be in, as Scott said, there is another section that's opportunities and challenges. I think this, if we're talking about skills, you have skills in, um, government and budget and finance, labor relations, community relations, intergovernmental relations, innovation is maybe the only thing you put here, right? That if we want someone who is, has innovation as a talent or skill, and really, you don't describe specific things here, you just say, you know, we're, we're looking for somebody who will identify unique things and demonstrate innovative and creative thinking, um, and be open to, you know, blah, blah, blah. So I think that, there are parts of that that are not about specific issues, but about a talent we're looking for.
I think you're quite right.
And I'm sorry, Councillor McKeel, because you were next and I overwrote.
Well, no, actually, you clarified what I was going to say, because I was really thinking I would, uh, I think we need to have preferred, uh, this candidate should have preferred experience with affordable housing, however, uh, with your focus on this should be not about specifics, um, it would be really nice if we could put that preferred affordable housing experience somewhere, but I agree, it's probably not here. In that same regard, I think that last sentence about cultural events would be nice to have someplace else, maybe under the opportunities, I don't have that document with me. But, uh, I real, I really feel like we have to have preferred experience with affordable housing, because that's a very complex problem, and a lot of cities are trying, but they can't make it work, and then there are cities who have, uh, have made it work. And so I think that experience is something that it would be really good to have here as we try to grapple with.
I can have that in another section, yeah.
Yeah, but in another section, I agree.
Yeah, and, uh, the more I hear from you folks, I think what we'll try to do is, uh, wordsmith this towards a set of skill sets and the ability to identify and develop ideas, um, attack, attacking problems and taking advantage of opportunities, I'm using that word like that, but you know what I'm saying, so how to identify opportunities and, and challenges and, and creative ideas or ideas and processes to get us from here to there.
Innovation and progressive thinking is my type. I'm not the final say here, people. So if, if we do all that, then other important skills and experience, so anything we really want to highlight here, Councillor Salinas Oliver?
Yeah, I would, uh, recommend to maybe take out the last three sentences, since I think we have that in the community relations area already. Um, I mean, the examples are good, but if somebody has experience working with diverse populations, they should be able to give those examples and understand what we're asking for. So I'd say just go ahead and take the last three sentences out, from proven ability to the end of that, uh, that sentence, and then just, because we have it in the community, community relations, and that cleans it up, I think.
Great. Councillor Lopez?
I, uh, I, I was beaten to, uh, beaten to the punch there. Um, uh, my, my comments were also. My, my comments were also going to be that I don't believe that we need to attempt to define diversity in our candidate profile here, as it does in the last couple of sentences. I also do believe that the middle section of this could use a little bit of a rewording to, to expand beyond, you know, the focus on, on Minnetonka. Prior to that, it does discuss some of our additional community partnerships. I believe you've already received feedback that would help you to, to craft this in a manner that really does those partnerships justice. Not that Minnetonka is not important, but, but others are equally important. I also find the sentence describing Minnetonka to be a little bit maybe wonky and outdated. A local fiber telecommunications network, offering multi-gigabit, it gets a little wonky, and it also is simultaneously outdated, so I think there's a way to clean that.
That's from our old ones, so, yeah, we'll definitely, and again, there's a better place for it than here.
Well, it's a combination of a couple of statements, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I agree with you, it is wonky, and so what is important is the thing that's before it, and that's that better description of the city that we sent in the first part. So I think if we describe it better there, what we want to be able to do here is say, what are the other skills and experience that you want and need in this position? So even if we just list them, that would be more helpful. We can craft that, it is wonky, it's a, it's a wonky statement. So the question is, what have we missed in the rest of it that you want to say here?
Counselor Lopez, and Counselor?
While we're, while we're discussing, while we're discussing Minnetonka, Minnetonka is unique in that it is, it operates in a governmental space, however, it is by its very nature a for-profit institution to an extent. So having some level of experience with, with that, the for-profit end of managing a business would be important. Because enterprise funds are a little bit there, but they're like half a step there, right? Whereas Minnetonka, enterprise funds generally do not have to compete in an open, in an open market, whereas Minnetonka does. And so if you're looking for very specific skills, you know, some level of skills, operating a business that competes in an open market would be important.
Although, to be fair, the city manager may or may not even be on the board of Minnetonka, and therefore may or may not really have that kind of oversight, but we can certainly put it in, it is, in fact, in other parts of the description about this is a unique thing that we do have a certain responsibility to oversee, but, yeah.
Fair enough.
Counselor McKeel?
I thought it was you.
Hey, Counselor Oberst, then Counselor McKeel.
So I did write a chunk of this in piece here, and my intent was to say to a candidate, you might want to know about these things that make Monmouth different. There is not any other city in this state, as far as I know, that has its own electric utility and its own telecom. There is? Okay.
Yeah.
I think can be, has been.
It, it makes us different, and then you throw the university on top of that. And I just wanted to make sure, and the trolley is now a new aspect of the city that makes us stand out from anybody else our size. And I just want to make sure that somebody coming in the door understands that there are some, I don't want to say challenges, but there's some, there are some interesting things that we're doing that might not be in their, on their radar, or on their expectation of what they're going to be in charge of having to run.
If they Google us, no, get the damn trolley, I'm firing Sabre II. That's all you get when you Google us anymore.
You know, I just, the thing with Minnetonka, you're right, Madam Mayor, the manager may not be on that board, but I can tell you that our last two managers have had numerous headaches because of our involvement with that organization. Those headaches now are mostly gone. Things are going great at Minnetonka, and, you know, it's not as big a concern as it was five years ago, 10 years ago. But it's something that I think a candidate needs to know exists, and understand that we're not talking about a little poda, kink, yank, thing here, this is cutting-edge, this is fiber to the premises, this is gig, you know, multi-gigabit internet. And we expect it to be managed, and the board to have oversight of that management, and going forward to continue being the success it is. I think a candidate needs to know that all that is on the table, and that's why I put this in. I just want to make sure that somehow this, the nature of Minnetonka and these other things gets through in this last section, that's, that's my point.
Okay. Counselor McKeel?
So I think the simple statement that Western Oregon University is, we're, we have the sister of cooperation, I think we might want to give a little bit more information about Western. Is it still, or maybe I'm not up to date, is it still trying to become a Hispanic-serving institution? I think that's actually a very significant thing to add here, because it changed, and I think it also then, Western is really, it kind of just looks like, well, they just are here, but it's a very sizable influence in the community, both with students and faculty who make up a lot of the population of the town. I think also at Western, and it kind of goes to the last sentence of the LGBTQ2IA+, is that we also have a larger LGBTQ2IA+ community at Western than I think is, is usual at an institution of that size. And I was trying to find it on my phone, I don't know, last time I checked, it was like 25%, so it's the student body identified as that, which is, it's a fairly sizable population. So I think those two pieces added to Western and its focus, you know, and that influence that's in the community, I think would be good to add.
Yeah, I think that, beefing that up a little bit about Western, I think that's a good idea, so I've got some notes there, I can add. Counselor Oberst?
And just to follow on, on Counselor McKeel on that, I think it's important this person understands that the city manager of Monmouth is going to be working with the university, with the university administration. And when it says that we have a history of cooperation, not always, and not as strong as it is now, because we've had some real efforts in that direction. And I think it's important that, again, that this candidate understands, you're going to be working with that institution, and on a regular basis, more than likely.
Counselor Carey?
You know, one of the things that, that strikes me as we're talking about this, and I'm generally in agreement, as we put this, and when the final document comes forth, after you guys have taken all that's been said and put it out there, we're really looking for things that the candidate is going to respond to here. You know, the, the description of the town and the description of all, that's nice, but I'm going to guess that when they start filling out their, and they start going through their cover letter, and if they rearrange their VITA or CB, it's going to be based on what's here. So that's where I think, and I'm in agreement with both, that we need to emphasize in more than one place, the impact and relationship with the university. Our goals for nearly ever have been to improve the relationship and communication with the university. I mean, we, I don't want somebody to know that it's over there, but I'm anxious to know how they will engage and recognize their lane and, while traveling in hours. That's an important thing to know. And however we can get that, whether it's here only, or somewhere else, I think it's really, I think it's really critical, because this is what they'll respond to when they fill out and they provide their material.
I think it's a really good point.
Okay, great, got a note, Counselor McKeel, then I do want to hear Counselor Selena Solvaros, Counselor Belts, if you have anything else to add that you don't think showed up anywhere else that we need to focus on.
Well, and maybe you already put this in your notes, because I thought the comment about, you know, a sizable academic institution in the city could be in the community relations, it might be a good place for it.
Right.
Something much more articulate than what I just said, so, but, yeah.
Counselor Selena Solvaros?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm in agreement in what has been said about what to add. I heard earlier about an opportunities and challenges section, is that correct? So we're adding that to this packet, or will that be with? Because I also heard we're going to have another piece that's talking about the city of Monmouth.
Right, there's, in the, in the full thing, it actually, we want to say a little bit about the city as well, and why we want them, what they will find when they get here, and then that had an opportunities and challenges section, and then ideal candidate, and this is ideal candidate.
Is ideal candidate. Okay, because I can see where, you know, talking about Western, talking about our culture, talking about some of our partnerships and sister city, just giving a profile of Monmouth is another area or another opportunity to talk about, you know, who we are, and then putting those snippets kind of as a running theme, so that they can put this whole packet together and go, oh, okay, and maybe we'll read something really interesting in their cover letter, or maybe we'll see something unique that has that same theme, if that's what we're going for, I think that would be helpful.
And, and also, something else that isn't in here, remember, last time we actually had them do a writing sample, so when we said, your, your application will include X and X and address whatever these questions are that we want to pose to them, which we will also come up with.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that that's probably, it's proper after the first round, you know, in other words, you get through your initial grouping, and then you, if you make an applicant, also write a six-page book report at the same time, you know, that'd be kind of interesting, but might limit your pool a bit. But I think what you want to do is definitely get a writing sample. I think you folks will want a writing sample, and so we'll talk about how to craft those questions here, after we've gotten the profile done, and it's out and moving, and then we'll talk about the next phases for you folks.
Counselor Belts, did you have anything, see anything missing, or see anything you think we want to emphasize? No, she's good, okay. Catch her right in the middle of the cough, okay. And you'll have another opportunity, this is not the final draft, obviously, so, all right, Counselor Lopez?
Yes, will we be speaking about the final portion here that addresses the salary range?
That's important to discuss, yes. Go ahead, what, what's your thoughts about that?
Oh, I, I mean, this data seems a little surprising to me. It seems that we, if, if my memory serves me correctly, we're currently positioned at the low end of this, this salary range. And, you know, I'm always skeptical of data, right? And so I'd be very curious to understand what, what cities, you know, comprised this survey, and, you know, a little bit more information before I were to suggest that we discuss a specific salary range, but it, I know that I don't want to be at the bottom.
Yeah, that's a great point, I think that's, that is something else we do need to discuss with more information than just what it says here. Counselor Oberst?
Very wise city manager, once you pointed out to me that the problem with ranges like this is that a job goes empty and you're towards the bottom, so you go towards the middle, which raises the range. And the next city comes along, and they do the same thing, and they do the same thing, and they do the same thing, and it's an endless chase upwards in salary for these positions. And sometimes over a fairly short time period, there can be significant increases. So being closer to the bottom is not necessarily in and of itself a bad thing. Now, that does not mean I am advocating that we beat the bottom, but I am pointing out that, that salary ranges like this, based on other cities, have a habit of drifting upwards sometimes precipitously and sometimes quickly.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Oberst, I think it's important that we decide what our cohort is, and where we want to be positioned within that cohort, which we will need more data that it looks like Scott's kind of preparing for us, Counselor Carey?
You know, I don't, I don't see any need at this juncture to have this specific of information. You know, the, the position, salary, you need to reference it, but it'll be competitive and commensurate with your skills and experience. And, and parenthetically, our ability to pay, because that, that's a little bit of it. But, but if, if we put that out, our new base is 182. That's what, that's what people are going to reckon they ought to have. And that jumps pretty high. So everybody's going to ask for the top, and say, well, all they can do is tell me no, and negotiate down. Yeah, so I, so the level of detail is important for us to have, and will be toned, you know, will be fleshed out further, but I don't think that's to be publicly published at this moment.
Yeah, who, who pulls you up are, Canby will pull you up, Cottage Grove will pull you up. We've tried to compare you with cities of like size and like size budget. I didn't compare you to Dayton, I didn't compare you to Amity, we tried to compare you, but there is, there is some wisdomness in understanding what your region is paying, you know, so understanding where your scale is in the region is also important. So all you really have is you have a low of 146 and a high of 182, Canby's the high one. But your other cities of size, we've included Dallas in this, we've included McMinnville, no, no, we did not include McMinnville, we included other cities of 10,000, I'm just, I'm looking here on my sheet.
And I guess, I mean, do, would we like to see?
The list?
An actual present, a document of this, so we can see what those cities are and why they were chosen, some are size.
Yeah.
Canby's a good one, because they have their own electric utility, they have their own telecom, so, well, no, I think it's private, but, so I think that we would like to see a lot more detail about those cities and why they were selected, and, and what their ranges are.
There's a lot of factors that go into, you know, it is, you know, experience, time on the job, you know, all of those kind of things, but I think that information is important to have.
Yep.
I just don't think that there's, that it ought to be included in a public announcement.
I do.
Because I don't know what we gain by that.
Yeah, I do think you have to advertise your range, I do think that that is part of an open requirement. So I'm going to ask the attorney to check that out for me.
Yeah. And, and if they want to know what the current city manager's paid, it's in our budget, so there's a page that lists everyone's salaries.
So confer there, and just make sure we understand that part.
And we can discuss further, Counselor Lopez?
Yeah, I think another piece of information that I'd like to know, on top of whether we're required to, is how customary is it to do this? If, and just thinking about it from an applicant's standpoint, you know, if eight jobs, if I'm looking at nine jobs, and eight jobs list a range, and the ninth doesn't, and I've got a limited number of hours in a day, and I've got to put together, you know, a compelling application that I'm catering to the specific, you know, specific needs and unique, unique nuances of the area, well, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're one of those that highly skilled candidates choose to apply for. And so if that means, you know, taking a dive into a range and providing a range, then, you know, I think, I think it's worth the work to. then, you know, I think, I think it's worth the work to attract highly skilled candidates. So, my question would be, when we do talk about this, I'd like to know how customary it is for other cities to project a salary range in this, you know, in this candidate profile.
Look at your LOC magazine, probably lists. And whether or not benefits are listed as well, right? I mean, another sort of one we, I, I think is important for us to include if we're listing benefits is that we pay the 6% per pickup, because some cities don't. And I've, I, in the past, when I know we've done studies, that was one other thing we looked at. But that's if we're going to be that specific. Councilor Selena Soliveros, did you?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to also bring up the issue of benefits, because I didn't see that here. And that will make a difference with, you know, if someone does negotiate and negotiates their salary, if we're including these different benefits, because that's going to make a difference in how higher, you know, we're able to go.
Let me say, let me say one thing about what I've said here. This is just the result of, yeah, I haven't made a recommendation one way or another. But your feedback, however, is extremely important to hear. Oftentimes, that we're taught in equity when you're advertising is you advertise a full range and then a hiring range. In other words, this is the full opportunity price of what, what they're looking at, but the hiring range is here, so somebody knows where they could potentially grow to. That's one way of doing it. However, managers oftentimes are contracted, so they are subject to the, to the council and they do not have to be subject to pays and grades and, and things like that. Best practice is says you do those things, but, you know, and, and that kind of thing. So, this is, so I did 11 cities, 10 cities, and all, all in size and in size of budget. So, I tried to keep those things in mind when we did it and, and offerings of service. So, we'll share that with you folks and as you folks go through that process, how you wish to advertise that, we can have that discussion about what's the best way to do that for you, to say that. If you don't say it at all, they'll want to know. And they'll go searching on their own as well. Chris?
Oh, Madam Mayor, I was going to say, just since, since the question's been asked, what you need to decide in open session, or you need to adopt hiring standards, criteria and policy directives. Nothing specific about salaries, so, yeah.
Thank you for that consideration.
Certainly, but you're not required to.
Did go in and look at League of Oregon City's job board, and they appear to have a form, basically, that you would fill out to post your job and salary range is the thing under location. And deadline is right below that, so. That, that would probably be a standard format we would have to submit to the league in order to post on their job board, is my guess, but. And Milton Free Water's 150,000 to 160,000, pretty tight range.
Where's that?
Milton Free Water is the one I pulled up. All right, other questions, comments, observations? Councilor Carey?
I, I think we're, okay, God, thank God for you. Yeah, you know, I think, I, I was initially concerned on the, and I had several notes on the communication, community relations. And one of the things that, that I initially thought was, is that we needed to find out how the candidates would utilize our communication director, you know, how that could be a benefit to them. But the more we looked at the other, the, the skilled group of department heads and employees, I guess I'm okay with that. But this city manager will have a, a mouthpiece, so to speak, that they may not have otherwise. And so, how can they double their efforts in a, you know, to communicate? So, I don't know whether there's room in that section for that or whether we want to lump that into the, you know, the last one that talks about our skilled staff. It is a little bit unique. So, anyway, that, that's the last little bit of hard burn that I had. I don't know, maybe there's something there, maybe not.
Okay, thanks. All right. I think, Scott, between you and me, we probably got enough notes to put our heads together and come up with the next draft, which would be, hopefully, what we would adopt. I think, Chris D. Worcester, we have that on our agenda for the next first meeting.
February 6th meeting, yes, but we would need to determine at that meeting, when we adopt the position profile, whether we're going to include the salary range in that document. But we could have it prepared and then just make the amendment that evening if you chose to adopt it.
And you need to provide for public input.
Yes.
Yes, right, we'll take, yeah, it'll be a post-part of the agenda.
The other thing that the council should keep in mind is the proximity to the department director's salaries and making sure that the city manager's salary meets or exceeds, you know, what the department directors are paid, so.
Yeah, I, so I was just going to say, if Scott can send his little matrix out to us so we know how that was developed, but then it would be good for us also to have a current sort of rough idea of the range of our department head's salaries, maybe, and current city manager's salary. Would that be helpful to anyone?
And we have that available in the budget document.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that brings us to reports for this evening. The mayor's report, I guess, I don't know. I, it seems like we had a lot of activity that we'll probably hear from our city manager about the ice snow event that was really top of mind for folks. And I have to say, I, I'm thankful to that, because I would have hated to miss our first meeting in our new building. But my, my only mayor's report is that last week ago, Monday night, on January 15th, I became a grandmother. I wasn't here. I, I did not get ice and snow, because I was in Phoenix, Arizona. And my grandson, Macklin James Heidi, was delivered on Monday night. He's a little guy. He's two pounds, three ounces. My daughter, he was a little bit earlier than we expected, but my daughter is in great health and he is progressing. And so, I, I may or may not be moving back and forth to Phoenix for a little bit. We hoped he would, she was scheduled to come back here in March and he would be born here, but since he'll be down there for a while, so I may be too, so. But glad I could be here with y'all tonight. That's my only mayor's report. So, we will now take reports of council boards and commissions, who all's been meeting with their folks. Councilor Lopez, then Councilor McKeel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations, Grandma. I have a report from the Parks and Rec Board. The Parks and Rec Board met on January 10th at 7:00 PM. We normally meet at 6:30. We had a, we had a, or my apologies, we normally meet at 6:00. We had just some individual considerations that we moved that, that alone meeting to 7:00. The board discussed, in large, the recreation grant process and how that is reviewed. And the lens with which they discussed this was trying to make the, A, trying to make the objectives of what we're trying to do with these funds and these grants more clear to grant, to, to the, grant applicants, and also to lower the barriers to people applying for these grants. We recognize that there are some barriers that we can't control, like insurance costs, et cetera, but trying to lower some of those barriers that we can, such as, you know, the length of the application and how, how much depth where we're asking applicants at different rounds. And so, all in all, the, the, the board really did a lot of work to streamline that application process. They also have increased, increased fund, the funding opportunity. In the past, it was a specific number of $500 grants. They've given themselves a little bit more latitude and now are, you know, granting between 500 to $1,000 if they have one project that is really stellar, but, you know, insurance alone is $320. They want to be able to give them a little bit, a little bit something extra to be able to make that project a reality. So, added a little bit of, a little bit of leeway or a little bit of decision-making opportunity for the board in that process. Very excited to see those grant applications come online and excited to see what fun activities we are able to support in our parks. They also discussed a little bit of a loopback from the Large Parks Tour that occurred at the end of the summer. During that tour, the board went to all of the large parks in the city and really was an opportunity for members to get eyes on, get eyes in the parks, experience parks and talk about that, you know, through that lens. And through that process, there was a little bit of feedback of some things that could, you know, just minor, minor improvements, things that could be, could be fixed or adjusted. And this is a loopback on the progress of, of some of that feedback. So, really, really engaging meeting. And the next meeting for the Parks and Rec Board is February 14th at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report. Thank you.
I hope there's Valentine's cake at that.
Oh, yes, yes. Golly.
My, huh.
Happy Valentine's.
All right, and Councilor McKeel?
Thank you, Grandma Mayor.
It's Gams.
Oh, Gams.
Gams.
Gams, Mayor.
That's, that's what the dogs call me now, and now there's the baby. So, I guess he has to call me the same thing the dogs have always called me.
That, that's good. So, I have the library report. The, the library is no longer accepting donations at the library. If people have books, they need to contact the friends of the library and they'll actually come by and pick up the books from your home. The contact information for friends of the library is at circulation and the info desk. And that information also will include specifics about what will be accepted by the library. And mark your calendar for the book sale, which will be around in May, but it's during the garden club sale weekend. So, you can pick up a plant and pick up a good book to read after you plant your plant. The library is starting the Get Lit, literature, get lit evening. And they're going to go over a variety of genres, from mystery to sci-fi to contemporary fiction and nonfiction. And these will be on Thursday, January 25th at 6:30. This is the fourth Thursday of the month. And if you are interested in that, you can contact Carey at the library. I just want to just make a comment about how fortunate we are as a city to be part of the CCRLS system, which is a consortium of libraries where we share books and materials across the, the different libraries. But in addition to that, the CCRLS budget allows us to have subscriptions that we might not, not necessarily have. So, one of the things that, as the, as a CCRLS budget, as the CCRLS is looking at next year's budget, they're going to increase the Heritage Quest, which is a genealogy program, and they're increasing it so that people can have access to this in their homes, so they don't have to come necessarily to a library to get access to that. But when there's a positive, there's also a negative. So, unfortunately, they're going to drop the Consumer Reports and the New York Times from their budget. And they're going to decrease the amount of material that's on Canopy. But, so I guess if you want Consumer Reports, you have to get that yourself. The good thing, though, with the budget is there, the grant that we had that allowed us to have hotspots is, went away and the CCRLS budget is now going to include in that hotspot usage for all the libraries. So, we might not have Consumer Reports, but we'll have hotspots. And again, I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, they're going to increase the number of eBooks they have, so I'm very, I'm very excited about that. The library, our library, is joining the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is a really amazing program. It provides one free book a month for each child, and there's no income requirement and there's no family size limit. And kids get these books from birth to five years old. And there's books then for each age group. And we actually looked at this and it includes a variety of diverse books, so it's a really nice program that we're going to be part of. The library has been running a thousand books before kindergarten program, and so they track the number of kids, the number of books that the kids read. And then there's prizes for getting, reaching benchmarks. And I'm actually, as an, as a former educator, second grade teacher, I am really excited that our library is doing both of these programs, because getting your kids to read and, or introducing them to books, as you know, grams, you, they'll, they'll, that makes a huge difference for preparing kids to start school. Has lots to do with these young kids having very large vocabularies before they start school, which increases their success at school. Finally, just some bragging points. The library staff is going to plan to have the Polk Resource Center staff come and talk with them about the resources at the resource center and so that the library staff can be included as what the city, the city is already doing, but is, they'll be able to help the public who are having difficulties and who need some support. And our next library meeting is January 14th at 7:00 AM. And there's always coffee and donuts, which is why I'm there every time. And it is, it is in the library. And that's all there is.
So, Councilor Oberst?
Thank you. I have just something really quick. Thank you, Mayor. So, right now, there's a tiny art show that's happening at the library, and tiny means five by five by five. It could be square, it could be round, whatever, like. And I know there's some very cool art pieces over there, so please take the time to go and look at that. 61, there's 61 art pieces. Yeah, really fun. And the Arts and Culture Commission, we are meeting this Thursday, because nobody wanted to drive in the ice last week. And, and that's all that I have for you tonight. Thank you.
I need to report on the activities of the tree board. And we met last Thursday night, and we have pretty much nailed down the details of the spring tree planting program. And I put information in front of you tonight. Because this involves an agreement between the city and some property owners in town, Councilor Shetterly thought it was important that I give you all full information. Apparently, it does not require council approval, but it would be a really nice thing if you all said this was a good plan. So, the background is that the tree board has kind of filled up all the planting strips and most of the planting sites in parks around town, and we are running out of places to put trees. And when he was our planner, Mark Fancy, got an urban forestry certificate, and part of that included a project where he went around, up and down every street in town and noted every property that lacked a front yard tree. And so, we have a comprehensive list of every residential property in town with no tree in the front yard. And the tree board has thought about this project for a while, has not been able to move forward with it. I believe we're on the edge of having an absolutely full tree board, because we have, I think, an application in for the seventh position. We actually had a young man who's an arborist show up at our. We actually had a young man who's an arborist show up at our last meeting. And he would be interested in joining, except I don't think there's going to be space, but I told him he could still come to our meetings to keep him engaged. That's a little digression there. So what we want to do is get ten properties in town that lack a front yard tree and put a tree in their front yard. And the idea is to invite people to nominate themselves and then offer them a half-priced tree, basically. The city will buy trees up to $100 a piece and the property owner will pay us back for half of that cost. We will plant the tree in the yard for them. And we'll make sure we take care of things like utility locates. And we're not going to plant a 120-foot eventual oak tree under a power line. Wade made sure we included the concept of power line friendly. And, you know, we'll get all that squared away. So we're going to ask Sabra to put out a call for properties. People will nominate themselves. We will throw names in the hat and draw a ten this first time around and work with those property owners on what tree they would like and the location. We've got Rocky Mountain Nursery has indicated that we can get trees for under $100, up to inch and a quarter caliper, which is a fairly significant tree. So we should be able to put in some nice trees for people. Some folks might choose a smaller and cheaper tree, a flowering tree like a dogwood perhaps. So we'll see how all that plays out. Manager Worster has identified a total of $1,200 for this project. So that would cover ten trees at $100 a piece plus $200 for soil and then it's in stakes and so on. And then if this goes according to plan, $500 of that would come back, up to 500 would come back to property owners. Up to 1,000 on trees and up to 500 coming back. And Councilor Shutterly has prepared an agreement that we would have signed by the city and each property owner that would identify characteristics of the property, detailing responsibilities of the party, spelling out the invoicing and indemnifying the city for any future responsibility for the tree once it's in the ground. So if somebody manages not watered and it dies, it's not our fault. If somebody decides it needs pruning, that's their responsibility, not ours, et cetera. So we took care of all that. And then if this is successful and we get a lot of nominations, we'll let those who don't get selected know that we plan to continue this program and conceivably as many as, as much as twice a year, spring planting and a fall planting. And as far as the number of trees in each planting and the budget line that will be required, that has yet to be determined. But we'll see how this first year works out. So I would value any comments or input on this that might sharpen this up a little. And if everybody's good with it, I plan to sit down with our communications director and detail an announcement for this, a lot on social media, et cetera.
Do I hear consensus for this idea? And going forward to use this money to create more neighborhood trees? Councilor Lopez?
Seeing as we were asking for a consensus, I just have a clarifying question on the funding. It says that Manager Worster has identified a total of $1,200 to fund this project. And then it goes on to say $100 for trees, $200 for soil amendments. Of that, up to $500 would be repaid by property owners. So just understanding the public liability in terms of funds for this, it would be a total of $700 coming from the public pocket. I love that.
That's right. And what I just saw, there's ten times up to $100. So if somebody asks, opts for a $60 tree, they'd only owe us 30 back and we would not have spent the $400.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
All right. So just that clarification that $700 is public money. And I think this is a fantastic use of it.
Yeah. Councilor Carrie.
Actually, was there any additional? You talked about the locations and some of that sort of thing. Would there be any additional costs there for the locates?
As far as I know, utility locates are a free service that are paid for by the utilities. Is that right, Russia? That, they kind of, the utilities pooled their money and then we have a single source we can go to for all the locates. And I'm sure we'll probably locate our own, but we'll need a gas company.
Just didn't want a hidden, you know, unanticipated.
As far as I know, it's a pretty.
Yeah, good deal.
All right. Seeing all the nods and thumbs, please carry on. Love it.
Thank you all.
All right. Any other board and commission reports before us this evening? Councilor Carrie?
Planning Commission did not meet. Iced out. We'll be back.
All right. There you go. We did have a couple of appointments sent our way a while back. And I, we still have planning commission appointments, applications open, I think, through the end of the month. So do invite folks to apply for that. We will go through a process again of screening those. But the two that. Okay, because what I would then, I would like to see Mike Jewell on Parks and Rec personally, so. I'm just looking up. I'm not looking at anyone. So wait, because what I was thinking, if you really think you might have another interested party.
Agreed. And I will, I will check in with Wade. And actually, my neighbor, Dan, was the one who brought him. No, picked it back. I think it was our chair brought him to this meeting. And so I should be able to find out, you know, give me, give me a couple of days and I'll let you know when I find out.
Well, what I would like to propose is that we appoint Jennifer Alexander to the library board and actually appoint Mike to Parks and Rec. And that's my recommendation this evening. And if others would like to hold off on, given Mike his second choice in hopes that we get a young arborist interested in the Tree Board, then I certainly would entertain that as well. But how about Jennifer Alexander for the library board? That was her first choice with us.
Absolutely.
Yep. She's, she is an avid user of our library. So, okay, we will go forward with that appointment. What do you want to do on the other?
What was his first choice?
Mike Jewell's first choice is Tree Board. But.
We get problems here, I guess. And I understand the attempt to fill. But, you know, if they're just getting into it, maybe their first choice.
He was actually on our Bike Ped Committee, I think, at some point. He's, I think he has been on one of our commissions when he lived outside of town. And now that he lives in the community, I think he is, he is indicating that, you know, he does want, look for opportunities, volunteer in the community. And so he does have a particular interest. He indicates in Tree Board because he's an avid woodworker. But I think he also is active in other recreational things and might be an asset there.
I would be okay holding off to see if the gentleman who's an arborist is even interested in the Tree Board. Because if he's not, then I would give Mike his first choice.
All right. We will hold off on that appointment this evening and wait for a report from Councilor Obers to come back to us.
I'll get back to you as fast as I can.
Yeah, you get back to us. Councilor Belz, did you have any reports for us this evening?
The senior board met today and I graciously told them I would not be at the meeting, making everybody sick. Because they don't do, don't do virtual meetings. So I chose not to attend. I will let you know next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Meta Mayor, the committee appointment process, you recommend and the council approves. I think it'd probably be best to have a motion.
Oh, I would entertain a motion to approve Jennifer Alexander.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Obers for the motion. Councilor Lopez for the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The attorney to show up. All right. That brings us to our city managers' report. Kristy Worster.
Well, congratulations to all of you sitting at your new dais. And I think that overall this evening, we had great luck with our our PA system. And congratulations to you, Phyllis, and to Kevin Perkins for your work in doing some testing this afternoon to make sure all is well. And Zach back in the IT room. Thank you all. I also wanted to say, we just had a flurry of excitement during the storm event. And I just wanted to thank our police department, our public works department and Power and Light employees specifically for being here all throughout the storm event. We have to give special kudos to Monmouth Power and Light employees because we had no outages whatsoever during the entire storm. That's a pretty big deal. Phyllis tells me that our certified population estimate is now at 11,019 people, which is really exciting. Exciting. We're moving up in our population, which is great news for us here in Monmouth. Let's see, as far as recent work, I attended the January 10th PaaS meeting. And I am going to go ahead and put the minutes in the next Friday notes for all of you. But there is some great information coming out to prevent homelessness in our community. And we will be having Commissioner Gordon present at our March 6th meeting to give us an update on the strategic plan. But we are meeting the 2023 goals, such as housing 89 households through the rapid rehousing program. And we have prevented 210 households from becoming homeless. So that, those are pretty significant statistics. And you'll hear more when he comes to present to the council in March. And we had to reschedule him due to the weather and the cancellation of the meeting. Just a reminder to everyone that our Love Local program is now underway. So for every $20 that you spend at the participating businesses, which are published on our website, you can earn a $10 credit, up to a total of $30 on your utility billing. So that's a way that we are supporting our local businesses. And so get out there and shop during the month of February. As a reminder, there is an open house coming up at the Polk Community Resource Center on January 30th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. That's located at 1407 Monmouth Independence Highway. Just for anyone that may be listening to the meeting later. And finally, we have a TSP open house, which is our transportation system plan. That is scheduled for Wednesday, January 31st at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. And we hope that you can all attend that event as well. We've been very, very busy. And I just want to commend staff for the great work they're doing as we acclimate to this new facility. There are a lot of challenges on a daily basis. But I am happy to conclude with a report that our elevator is now operational.
They had to escalate the problems.
That's really uplifting news.
Yeah. Thank you very much to our staff. We got some kudos yesterday. Kristy and I, meeting with our all-hands group. Our local state representative said that typically in these kinds of weather events, they get a lot of phone calls and, you know, things about what's going on. But because our city staffs did such a great job in communicating that they did not receive a lot of phone calls. So the fact that we do have an excellent communication director and program going, keeping really those updates and getting sort of where all of our departments were, what they were working on, has made a huge difference, I think, in how folks handle this. Our fire department, fire chief mentioned that he was pleased to see so many people shopping for groceries on Thursday night outside his window because he knew that meant people were going to be prepared to stay in. And in fact, Saturday, Sunday had far fewer calls for slip strips and falls than he had expected. But he said by Monday, people got a little housebound and all of a sudden, we had a lot of fractured extremities. So it will be our job to remind folks that when we say, when folks say, "Don't go out," that means don't go out. Although, pro tip, our firefighters all have yak tracks that they carry with them to put on their boots and also to offer to people that they encounter in medical situations who are ambulatory. They have, they put them on them too. So there's a pro tip. And I'm seeing nods from our guys, our police chief and our public works director. So there you go. Yeah, yeah. Get your footwear planned ahead for next time. All right. And that brings us to council comments or announcements of future events.
So mostly what I have to comment on has been, my thunder has been stolen. I just wanted to thank staff for the job you guys did. I spoke with one public works worker partway through the event, towards the end. And he said, "Yeah, my back is sore from shoveling, but we got everything cleared." So, you know, they worked really hard. And the idea that we had an ice storm with no power outage after the last one is absolutely astounding. And the streets were passable and fairly short order. I was able to drive to Salem on Tuesday. You know, it was just astounding to me. And of course, chief, I know that your guys are just constantly busy in an event like this. So thanks to all staff for everything you did. Sabra, I don't look at your social media stuff. So I can't say what you did, but I bet it was wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let people know, as you probably all remember, that starting next week, February 1st, begins Black History Month. And we have three really good programs this year. February 16th at 1:00 PM, the Monmouth Senior and Community Center will have their movie matinee showing a film, to be determined, well, they know, to be announced. They'll have a film for Black History Month on that day. We also have our community celebration on February 22nd at 6:30 PM at the Monmouth and Senior and Community Center. And that's going to feature a talk presented by Dr. Walida Emirisha, who is a PSU professor. And she did the talk, "Why Aren't There More Black People in Oregon?" Which is a really fascinating talk. The discussion will be facilitated by Reverend Frank Morris. And music will be by Harmony Thompson. There'll be refreshments and free drawings. The library is going to have a program on February 24th at 2:00 PM. And they secured a speaker from Oregon Black Pioneers. So that was quite a coup on there. So lots of really good programs coming up this month.
Great. Thank you for that. And Councilor Carrie. My bad, Zach. Thank you, Councilor Carrie, for saying we should have a work session to discuss the community survey issue. Last town hall.
Training on the AV equipment.
All right. Councilor Selena Solberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to read the land acknowledgement. "We would like to acknowledge that indigenous tribes and bands have been on the lands here and throughout Oregon since time immemorial. It is not lost on us that the Willamette Treaty forcibly removed these peoples from their homelands in 1855 to 1856, the year that the city of Monmouth was founded. We recognize the pre-existing and continued severity of the federally recognized tribes that are a vibrant part of this region today, the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ronn Community and the Confederate Tribes of Celeste Indians. And thank them for sharing their perspective on..." And thank them for sharing their perspective on how we might care for one another and the land so it can take care of us. We commit to engaging in a respectful and successful partnership as stewards of these lands."
Thank you. And I, I would think we'd be remiss if we don't mention, we have another date here on the thirtieth. And that would be the, um, orientation and initial meeting of our budget committee. So we're, we are all invited to that. So we'll see you here next week, um, maybe even twice next week. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Dang it. Now, I would like to call to order the Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting of the first inaugural Urban Renewal Agency meeting in this beautiful new building and ask Phyllis Bowman, the city recorder, to do the roll call, please. Ms. Belz.
Sorry, Gooden, I hear, I'm barely here.
I didn't have my microphone on, my bad. Mr. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. McKeel.
Here.
Mr. Oberst.
I am here.
Ms. Selena Soliveros.
Here.
Ms. Kuntz.
Present. And we do have time for citizen comments, seeing none in the room, where any submitted for consideration.
No, we're not, Mayor Kuntz.
Thank you. The consent calendar for the Urban Renewal Agency consists the minutes of September fifth, clear back then, twenty twenty-three. Those minutes were in your pocket. And I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the minute.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Oberst for the motion, I mean, Mr. Oberst for the motion and Mr. Lopez for the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That brings us to our business agenda. We have one item tonight, our annual Urban Renewal Agency report. And Susie Marston, the finance director of both the Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Monmouth, is our second guest of all time in this chamber. Yay.
I learned. Yeah. Thank you, Chair Kuntz, and members of the Urban Renewal Agency. I'm honored to be your second guest tonight in your new city hall. For the record, my name is Susie Marston, finance director for the city of Monmouth. I'm here tonight to present the Urban Renewal Agency financial report for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Sorry, I always lose my breath when I'm up here. Um, in accordance to state law, the Urban Renewal Agency is required to prepare an annual financial report and file it with the city as well as all of the impacted taxing districts by January thirty-first. So while I provided the numbers for this report, the bulk of the report was prepared by our community development director Suzanne Duffner and also our public works director, Russ Cooper, who is behind me. So in the report, it highlights, uh, projects that were accomplished in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I won't go into detail as, um, that's provided in the report, but I will list them. They are the substantial completion of this building and we have the dedication of the city hall. We also were able to support the completion of the Ash Creek Resource Center. The completion of the Monmouth Montessori School Expansion Project. The approval of five grant requests for facade improvements. The completion of the twenty forty-two Monmouth Improvement Downtown Plan. And we also, um, are utilizing the RARE program to hire a Main Street Coordinator to help implement projects that were identified in the downtown improvement plan. We were also able to begin the design of the, let's see, the much anticipated Medrona ninety-nine W crosswalk, which is scheduled for installation later this year. Projects coming up are continued facade improvement grants. This is part of the city's economic development strategy. It also includes assistance with new development projects in the Urban Renewal District and, um, implementing projects in the downtown improvement plan. We'll continue, uh, providing support for infrastructure projects that are identified in the Urban Renewal five-year CIP plan. That also includes pedestrian improvements. And we're also, uh, planning on making the final payment on the interfund loan from Monmouth Power and Light that was used for the construction of the Main Street Amphitheater. That's scheduled to mature, um, July of twenty twenty-five. So for the financial update, um, the Urban Renewal Agency has a frozen tax base set in fiscal year two thousand and six. And that amount is thirty-four million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, eighty, eight hundred and seventy dollars. The assessed value in fiscal year twenty-three was almost triple that, at ninety million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The difference between those two is the tax that goes into our Urban Renewal Agency to fund the projects outlined in the plan. So I'll run through the numbers with you. In twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three tax year, or fiscal year, I'm sorry, the total tax increment funding amounted to six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is twenty-one percent higher than what we received in twenty-one, twenty-two. The interest revenue came in at a hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. And total money expended was three million, fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. So the maximum indebtedness for the Urban Renewal is, uh, sixteen million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. We have spent just over half of that to date. At, um, with last year's spending, that takes us up to the eight million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. For the current fiscal year that we're in, um, as I was prepping for the meeting, I noticed there's an error on page four. If you'll look in the left-hand column, the audited beginning fund balance, that should be nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. The amount that I have in this report was actually the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, beginning fund balance. So I will make that correction when this gets mailed out to the taxing districts. As for the rest of this year's fiscal budget, our projected total tax increment is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. To date, as of December, we're already over that. We've collected a hundred and nine percent of that tax, so we're good there. Uh, project grant miscellaneous revenue is budgeted at four hundred, estimated interest earnings is a hundred and thirty thousand. And we've also projected to borrow another five million dollars to complete projects coming up. The four million that was borrowed in twenty twenty has been used up on the projects to date. Total expenditures budgeted for fiscal year twenty-four amount to six million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. And that is broken down between, um, materials and service, capital improvements, debt service and operating contingencies. So that brings me to the end of my report. This notice, we'll, we'll put a notice of this report, we're going to publish it in the, um, it's the itemized, itemizer observer? Okay. Twice by March first. And, uh, we'll make it available to the public on the city's website. So with that, I would welcome any questions if you have any.
Councilor Lopez, Mr..
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. I just want to compliment you and, uh, and, and the team on, on the quality of this report. Seen a number of these reports over the course of the, you know, the, the years that I've been involved with this entity and, um, I, they continue to improve and become more robust and rich in their information. And, uh, I, I, I just deeply appreciate and I'm sure that our, um, partners, um, in this, uh, in terms of the other taxing districts, also deeply appreciate the level of detail and, um, insight into what we're truly accomplishing for the community with these funds. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Uh, Mr. Carey.
I've got a note there that says that and I'm, I'm still getting, still figuring it out. I, I echo, uh, Councilor Lopez's or Mr. Lopez's, um, uh, comments, a lot of work, a lot of good information. However, I would make us, uh, ask you to consider one other way to perhaps make it a bit more robust. And that is, would be to assign values, dollar amounts, uh, to the various projects that, that we have. I mean, the public doesn't know that we have the thirty thousand dollars or forty, whatever we put into the facade improvements. But to say that we improved five businesses, uh, you know, for this amount of money, uh, and go take a look. The only one really that had a, an amount was the Montessori School. And, you know, the impact of our infrastructure, our contribution to the, you know, the resource center, the, the amount of money we spent to make city hall happen, that the taxpayers didn't, um, at least directly, would be helpful and, and impactful. And also, if we were able to leverage any other dollars, if we leveraged state dollars, uh, transportation dollars on the crosswalk, for example, um, you know, that, that would just show how we are good stewards of the money and to Councilor Lopez, or Mr. Lopez's comment, uh, how this is really impacting in a positive way our community. But to be able to assign some values to that, I think would be, uh, impactful. Just my two bits. Good, good work.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Count, uh, Mr. Oberst.
I would like to move to approve and forward the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency financial report for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to the City Council of Monmouth and other impacted taxing jurisdictions.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Oberst and thank you, uh, Mrs., uh, Count McKeel and Selena Soliveros. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, for the record, that should include the amendment that, uh, Susan, Suzie noted.
I would include in my motion the amendment that the finance director pointed out needed to be made to this document.
Yes, changing the beginning fund balance, all right.
Second.
And the second approves, so thank you for that, Ms. Selena Soliveros. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 We will go forward and send that out to the taxing districts and post publicly as amended and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, and thank you all very much for your attendance.